We just came out of a budget workshop with our Budget Advisory Board, so I apologize that we're running just a few minutes late, but we appreciate you being here. This is the last call for speaker cards. If you have a card, you need to get it to Wendy, or if you need a card, grab it real quick. And now that your commission is seated, I'll introduce everybody. First, let me call the meeting to order. It's about 7:10 p.m. on July 13th, 2021. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in this evening by our Police Captain Chris Ruse and our Deputy Fire Chief Tom Bazanas. They were our greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. Our Recording Secretary. Did I see Cassidy?
No, it's Taylor Locker.
Taylor Locker, thank you. Taylor's with us this evening as Recording Secretary. Our Assistant City Clerk Wendy Hauntz. Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone 1.
Good evening.
Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone 2.
Hey, everybody.
Our Deputy Mayor in Zone 3, Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. Our City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. And City Attorney Randy Hayes. For anybody listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, at this time, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me just address the commission as we get started. Each of you, and I as well, have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of Ormond Beach. But along with that honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So let's settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Per commission rules, we allow three minutes each speaker, and we keep a tight rein on that. If we give more to one person, then we have to go over for everybody. And so when your three minutes is up, we'll go to the next person. I will call out the name and then also call out a person who will be on deck if they want to move up a little closer so they can be ready to go. And we will start with Donna Birnbaum.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for calling this meeting and thank you to all the participants who have chosen to be here and showed up. We appreciate your cooperation. The issue with the church is a difficult one for some of us. It is a building that you may love, you may hate, but it is definitely one that is on prime real estate in Ormond Beach. It is a piece of property in downtown that can't be duplicated, that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something special for Ormond Beach, its citizens, its visitors, and its business community. A parking lot, even a temporary parking lot, is, what many of us believe, to be a terrible idea. There is a lot of room on the property. There's a lot of potential for the property, for something that could possibly even bring income into the city instead of just being something that we spend money on in order to put cars in while people go to a restaurant. There are a lot of other expenses with making a parking lot that make it not necessarily a great choice. People have to move up and walk across New Brittany, a place where the pavement's not even, the road is not in particularly wonderful shape, and it just is not an inviting place. There are already quite a few parking facilities in the area. Some of them are not in wonderful shape, such as what is across from the school by the police department. Perhaps it would be better to make that a much more inviting parking lot with better signage in order to direct people to that particular asset. I think a lot of people are going to give you statistics, a lot of people are going to give you their arguments, you know, impassioned and all, and I don't really feel that way, but I just hate to see a waste of an amazing piece of property right on the riverfront that we will never have available to us again. And I'd like you to take some time to reconsider making any decisions about that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And next up will be Robbie Coleman, followed by Rob Byrd.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the city residents of Ormond Beach. First, I want to give some background on myself and my opinion as it relates to the church. I'm a third-generation Ormond Beach resident. After high school, I left the area for college, traveled and lived throughout the Midwest and Southeast in a commercial construction business. Six years ago, my family and I moved back here, and we plan to stay permanently. We love this community. Unlike some others in the community you may hear from tonight, I don't have a personal connection to the existing church. The church has been at that site my entire life, but until a few months ago, I'd never been inside of it. When I did visit the church, I noticed deterioration resulting from neglect. The air is not running, there are some leaks in the roof, but I found the building to be in decent structural shape based on the 30 minutes I spent inside. Over the course of the last few weeks, I've discussed the church property with many young families and residents. All sorts of ideas have been discussed: mixed commercial residential, water view dining, new smaller library, and convert the existing library to something else, office space, and others. Based on the feedback from the community and my personal opinion, I'll admit I don't know what the best use for the property is. All of that said, there was a resounding response as to what the space should not be, and that's a parking lot. That comment was unanimous. I've heard on occasion that there's not enough parking in downtown Ormond. I personally have visited the downtown district at least once a week for the past five years, and I've never had an issue finding parking. When the parking issue has come up in the past, I bring up Park at the Library, behind Anderson Price Building at Ormond Elementary, and typically the response I get is, "Oh, you're right. I didn't know you could do that," or "I forgot about that." At the end of a six-month pause, if the best use for the community is that the church be reused as a city-operated project, that's great. If it's determined the property should be sold for private development, commercial residential, nonprofit through a city-generated RFP, that's great. If the community members do not believe, I and many like-minded community members do not believe that the best use of the property for the community would be a million-dollar water view parking lot. For that reason, I'm asking you delay the demolition of the space for six months so that the city and community can determine the best use of the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rob Byrd, followed by Robbie O'Brien.
Rob Byrd. I'm here this evening as the Vice Chair of the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail Corridor Management Organization. First, I'd like to thank the City Commission and the citizens of Ormond Beach for their support during and after the state and federal scenic designation process for the Loop in 2007 and 2009. While the primary category for designation of the Ormond Loop Corridor as a national scenic byway was its intrinsic scenic resources, like most other byways, ours has intrinsic resources in several other designation categories, including historic resources. One of the management organization's goals, as expressed in our Corridor Management Plan of 2007, is to protect, preserve, maintain, and enhance all of the byway's intrinsic resources, including the historic ones. The byway's management plan recognized Ormond Union Church as part of the corridor's historic story, along with such other nearby historic structures as the Anderson Price Building, the Ormond Yacht Club, and the Pilgrim's Rest Primitive Baptist Church. All of those structures, including Riverside Church, are directly on the Loop roadway. While the building there now is not the original, the current Riverside Church embodies a recognized historic architectural style, mid-century modern. It is, you could say, the younger sibling of the other structures I just mentioned. The byway management organization realizes there are issues with the building, that a request for a delay of demolition comes at an awkward time, and that a majority of the commission has already set the course of action. But the imminent demolition of Riverside Church caught us off guard, in part, like others in the community, it seems, because of our unusual circumstances this last year and a half. The Corridor Management Organization would ask the commission majority to revisit its decision on May 4th and would support a six-month moratorium on the demolition of Riverside Church to review every possible alternative for this site with more normal public input. If demolition proceeds now, any site option that would include preserving the historic building is lost forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie O'Brien, followed by Douglas Kinney.
Good evening. My attendance today is primarily about, like you guys, listening and seeing what the opportunities are, but also to clarify probably the role of Salty Church, as our name has been mentioned in a variety of ways. So clarity is always helpful. And one of the principles for us in terms of being mentioned in this topic is that we always want to be an asset to the community. So whatever way we can help, whenever there's an issue, we always want to be the kind of folks that step in to provide solutions. At the same time, it wouldn't be a surprise for you to hear that we care a whole lot more about people than we do property, because people come first. At the same time, if we can be a part of a, like a multilateral solution in some way that'd be a benefit to the community, we're there. So we want to listen and be available if the opportunity comes. Thanks.
Thank you. Douglas Kinney, followed by Tom Caffrey.
First, thank you all for coming and listening to the people of Ormond Beach. I would just like to say, it seems really tough to tear down that church and make a parking lot. I would think that maybe the commission would look at other possible ways of using that property, even selling it to somebody else and not incurring the expense of tearing it down. You know, if you put a parking lot there, is it going to become a commercial space within the next three years by the city of Ormond Beach? Or is it going to be a parking lot the rest of the time that we're around? So I'd just say, put off any decisions. I know you've got a fence up there, I know you've got a contractor that's got some money tied up in it, but maybe if you could sell it instead of incurring all that expense to tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Caffrey, followed by Bill Partington, Sr.
Hey, Commissioner, thanks so much for hearing us. And so I'm a resident 1409 North Beach, so I drive by that church every day. Never been inside of it, nor do I care to. It doesn't matter to me, but one thing that does matter is real estate value. 387 North Beach just sold for $1.5 million. It's an absolute tear-down. It's a disaster of a property, and it's just a couple of blocks away. This property was bought for $729,000, so a comparative market analysis in the four years or three and a half years in which this happened, I think there's a significant increase in value, which benefits all of us as citizens. So I think if we continue to look through those lines of either selling the property or doing something further for the city, such as the Civic Center that was talked about, the Chamber pushed, the Ormond Main Street pushed, when it was purchased, I think then we go along those lines. But parking lot is just the wrong way. I own a business in Daytona Beach on Main Street that is the quintessential parking lot central. They knocked building down on Main Street, left and right, left and right. There's a county parking lot that used to be a building. It's no longer a building. So I just don't believe in parking lots. I think parking lots are a terrible idea. There's plenty of parking. I've never run into an issue. I go all over the city. I tend to frequent grind. I love there. So I just don't see the point of a parking lot. So my opinion is no vote, and we appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you, Thomas. Bill Partington, Sr., followed by Rita Press.
Bill Partington, for Pine Valley Circle. Let me preface my remarks with saying that I know you all personally up there, and I apologize if my presentation may sound a little bit harsh, but here it is. This meeting is an opportunity for those of us that think that the vote to demolish the church was premature and those decided without the opportunity for the public to be heard to tell you that. The vote to demolish the church was premature and was decided without an opportunity for the public to be heard. I don't see this meeting as a meeting to discuss the options and the possibilities that might be available because we have not been invited to do that. We would need to have a public meeting like the ones that we were promised when the property was purchased. We would need to bring in our consultants and solicit ideas from the community on how the building could serve the community. I was at the meeting where the decision was made to purchase the building. I was at the workshop where the consultant, without any input from the public and with only direction from city staff, presented four options. The public was not allowed to suggest any options or speak. There was no other meeting that I know of between the workshop and the meeting on May 4th where the vote to demolish the church was taken. I have been an interested party since the beginning and requested repeatedly to have access to the building. That was denied. I was able finally to tour the building and was amazed at the contrast between what I saw and what was reported. I attended the auto auction where some of the assets of the church were sold. I was prevented by the auction from bidding. It's time to admit that this could have been handled better and delay the demolition until a study can be conducted to evaluate all of the options. The responsibility of any costs or consequences of a delay should rest on the shoulders of those that made the decision to handle this property in the way that it has been handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Press, followed by Connie Colby.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity. The city of Ormond Beach has a great deal to offer its residents, but the one thing it does not have is a structure that can accommodate large gatherings or a showcase for indoor events. In 2018, the opportunity presented itself, and the city purchased the Union Church with that express purpose. At the time of purchase, it was stated that the city was purchasing the church expressly for a community use. The decision was praised by a diverse segment of our community because it was seen as an opportunity to bring events to our city, and events bring people, which in turn help downtown businesses and restaurants. The need for a community center that existed in 2018 has not changed. That need still exists today in 2021. At the time of purchase, there was no mention that we would use taxpayers' money, $729,000, to buy a building for a specific purpose, a community center, and then demolish it for a temporary shell parking lot. Surely no one thought that you could buy a church, repurpose it for a community center without funding or repairs. The easy thing to do is tear down the building, build a temporary shell parking lot. But we have a structure that has good bones. It has been the site of a church from the early days when Rockefeller worshipped there. The present church has been part of the neighborhood for 60 years. It fits in nicely with the streetscape and the other historic buildings. It can be repurposed into something we need and can be very proud of. So here we are now, an order issued for the city to demolish the Union Church, and the residents are aghast as to how the whole process unfolded. In all honesty, I believe COVID played a role in hindering community input in a city government that usually does an extraordinarily good job at seeking it. However, that is the fact. There was a lack of community input. It has been stated by our representatives that your constituents are your bosses. Tonight, you are hearing from a groundswell of bosses that are asking you to please pause the demolition. This is important. We're not asking you to change your mind, but rather asking for the opportunity to open your mind and explore all the possible options. Please do the right thing for the right reasons. Give the process the thorough vetting it deserves, pause the demolition, and allow all options to be explored, because once it's gone, it's gone forever.
Thank you, Rita. Connie Colby, followed by Dick Hildebrand.
Good evening, Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Rather than just being another tacky beach town, Ormond Beach offers a more cultured and refined environment. Places such as the Casement, the Loop, the Beach, German Garage, McDonald's House, Central Park, the Ormond Yacht Club, amongst others, the Granada Bridge is iconic, Andy Romano Park, reasonable building heights along the beach, and our beautiful library and City Hall all weave together to form a desirable place to live and visit. The former Riverside Church fronting the Halifax River with its historic architecture deserves to be included with these other assets. Its architectural style is aesthetically consistent with the neighborhood. We still have an opportunity to retain this part of the history of Ormond Beach. Not only would the cost of new construction be prohibitive, it would be difficult to design a building that would complement this historic area. If we can't afford to repair this structurally solid building now, why would we think that we can afford to build something bigger and newer in the future? It is my opinion that we should continue to encourage unique buildings in the historic district to be repurposed for a civic purpose, such as was intended when we purchased the property. The shell parking lot was never the intention, and at this time, there's no other plan for that property. Losing places like the Ormond Hotel, the Peninsula Hospital, Julian's, and the Riverbend Golf Course leave big holes in this city. Please pause the demolition and allow a reasonable amount of time to explore a lot of potential uses for this building and allow for an independent building inspections to determine the true condition of the church. No one has questioned its structural integrity, and it's survived all of the hurricanes that have come along. There have been divergent opinions as to the condition of the interior and the roof, none of which appear to have any basis of anything other than visual inspections and the opinion of the appraiser. Estimates for the air conditioning repairs, electrical repairs, and minor roof repairs were reasonable in 2018. I don't know if these were ever done. I have lots of suggestions. Maybe this isn't the time to give suggestions, but some of the things I had were things like neighborhood block parties for older neighborhoods where we don't have clubhouses, dinner theaters. We don't have anything like that around here. Meetings with you guys, if you would come and sit down, and we could visit, get to know you better and talk about ideas that are going on. Fundraisers, times when you are going out for offices, and we could get your ideas on things like that. Family functions, weddings, birthdays, receptions, anniversaries.
Thank you, Connie. Dick Hildebrand, followed by Lou Welk, or Welgi.
My name's Dick Hildebrand. I moved here in 2013 after retiring from being a professional engineer, project manager, and program manager for major oil companies in the energy business. I know something about buildings and constructions. My understanding is you have a 45-year-old building with 45-year-old plumbing, 45-year-old electrical work, 45-year-old insulation, and a roof that's been leaking for over 10 years. You have asbestos in the building and mold in the building. You have a very hazardous situation. It's going to be extremely expensive to renovate that. You need a whole new roof. Everybody missed that, it's leaking. You need to pull the ceiling and all the walls down so you can spray and get rid of the mold. You've got to replace the plumbing. You've got to replace the wiring. The only thing you've got left is a steel structure. In my view, that building has a negative value of one-half of a million dollars. That's what it's going to cost to take it down or to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou Welk, followed by Julia Trillo.
My name is Lou Welgi. I'm at 88 Mound Avenue, Ormond Beach. The Union Church is an A-frame structure, mid-century modern, and so being a philologist, enjoying letters and words, I composed this little talk. A-frame. Any and all problems can and most often should be reframed as opportunities. At the southern side, at the eastern terminus of Lincoln Avenue, is where the Union Church now stands. Arguably our GOAT, greatest of all-time president, Abraham Lincoln was the redeemer of our country from the great sin of slavery. Abolishing what the plantation class euphemistically called their, quote, "curious institution" of chattel slavery was deemed radical by both major political parties of the early 1800s. Lincoln's Henry Clay-led Whigs and Stephen A. Douglas's Jacksonian Democrats. Additionally, Lincoln didn't so much choose to belong, but was rather adopted into the new radical, even revolutionary, Republican third party in 1860. Abraham Lincoln preserved our union and afforded America a new birth of freedom. Let's afford sufficient time to allow our local citizenry the freedom to discuss the advantages of preserving our mainland side's historic Union Church at the corner of Lincoln and Beach Street. All right, see, now Robbie of the Salty Church, there was an email that was sent to y'all some weeks and months ago that, from what I understand from our friend and a neighborhood member Travis here, included offer of monies to repair the church. Want to say that? And I've asked for sufficient time, as Jerry said, not limiting ourselves to a six-month deadline, but I would like to request that sufficient time be allowed to gain citizen input. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Trillo, followed by Jerry Valsick.
Thank you for being here this evening. I want to talk about property and potential. Last week, Commissioner Littleton was quoted in The Observer as saying, "The building was constructed to be a church, it functions as a church, and it looks like a church." It seems to me the discussion is being held up by a simple answer. We want to say old buildings are better than new ones. Once a church... Once a church, always a church. What makes a building a church is what happens inside it. 56 North Beach Street is not a church anymore. It's a large A-frame building with potential for the citizens of Ormond Beach. From everything, from a meeting hall to a spot to show the movies on the Halifax when it rains on a Friday night. It could be a commercial kitchen with income stream. It could be an entrepreneur's center. It could be the trailhead for the Ormond Seating Loop and Trail. None of these uses would require Taj Mahal-like expenses to repair the building. All of them would enliven our district. The building is a tourism magnet. We have historical treasures. We have individual architecture throughout our downtown that makes it a perfect synchronicity between these and other buildings. Ormond's architectural diversity is one of our charms. No one else looks the way we do. There are no other beachside towns that look like us. When New Smyrna Beach spent nearly $6 million to build its new Brannan Center in 2015, it had a 50-year history with that piece of property. The old building was first the city library, then a place to hold meetings. The new building's design was the result of multiple charrettes with community stakeholders. In short, the people of New Smyrna knew what they needed before the new center was built. What's needed here is time. Time for the city's asset to be put to work and tested. Time for a parking study to determine what we really need to do about downtown parking. Time to see if the 24 parking spaces already on the side are even actually useful. They've never been tried. A dirt parking lot on the river reduces an asset to a liability. Taking a pause can only be a positive. Appoint a citizens committee of government, business, and community leaders to lead the discussion. If no inventive or positive solution for property can be found, then the demolition is only momentarily delayed. If something creative, useful, and purposeful can rise from six months of discussion, citizen input, and work, then the city will be greatly enriched. Thank you.
Jerry Valsick, followed by Judith Stein.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Valsick. I'm a city resident. I'm also a retired professional engineer with a background in civil and environmental engineering. Thank you, Mayor, for sanctioning this meeting. I'm here along with so many people here tonight to advocate for a minimum six-month pause in the demolition of the church. A sufficient pause to give enough time for our community to get involved in helping to determine the best use of the church property. I sent each of you commissioners my 15-minute overview of the Union Church issue. About two weeks ago earlier, I presented it at a civil discourse in Common Ground meeting. Here are the points I want to emphasize. I see there was a predisposition by the city to demolish the church and to replace it with a temporary parking lot, followed later by a civic center at the City Workshop 18 months ago on January 7, 2020. This was at the outset of the coronavirus pandemic. The statement was made at the workshop, "Public participation will be part of our decision-making process." The ensuing horrific pandemic precluded any real citizen awareness and input on the church issue. So why didn't the commission wait until we, the citizens, could input before it voted to demolish? At least one of you who voted to demolish cited the need for public input before voting to demolish. Please note, we elected you to represent us well. Now, we're here to continue our, to register our concern and input 18 months later, thanks to the attenuation of the pandemic by the vaccines. A key question, is it really best to demolish the church and convert it into a parking lot for the time being at the expense of sacrificing one of the most notable, or one of the notable links to our history? I think the best use of the church and property should be evaluated by a suitable historical urban consultant. For example, such as Bender and Associates did for the McDonald House several years ago. Public meetings enabled and enhanced citizen awareness and allowed for input by our citizens. Another question, has a formal study been done on the need for additional parking? Not a parking inventory, but a study of need. We haven't heard about any input from the city's Quality of Life Board on this issue. Why not? I see great value in establishing a citizen-based committee with appropriate representatives, including business and development interests in our city. Again, I'm here with so many other people tonight to advocate for a minimum six-month pause in the demolition, a sufficient pause to give enough time to figure out what the best use of the property is. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jerry. Judith Stein, followed by Terry Mercer.
Good evening. I'm Judy Stein, President of the Ormond Beach Arts District. The building at 56 North Beach Street is a fine example of mid-century modern architecture. It was designed by Howard Chilton, a renowned South Florida architect, and built in 1960 by the local firm McCracken and Associates. The mid-century modern movement flourished in Florida after World War II. It is characterized by clean simplicity, integration with nature, and open floor plans and interior spaces. Our building has high wooden cathedral ceilings, a distinctive wall of concrete and aluminum, unique interior doors, and decorative breeze blocks in the front, all typical of the style. I'm really excited to tell you, I learned just late yesterday that our building will be named one of the 11 to save by the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation at a formal award ceremony next week. Each awarded property will receive increased public awareness and assistance from the organization to identify custom solutions for each building. They will even assign a staff member to us who could help locate and secure sources of funding. Knowing this now, it would be even sadder if the building received this award posthumously. Today, each commissioner received a letter from the CEO and President of the Florida Trust stating their interest in helping to find a preservation solution for this important historic place and asking for a pause in demolition. I toured the interior of the building twice, once in September 2019 and just this past April. Contrary to some of reports that you've read, most of us in the recent group were surprised at its relatively good condition, despite the fact that no effort had been made to keep it from deteriorating. Yes, there was some obvious water intrusion on a small part of the cathedral ceiling, and yes, some lower ceilings had damage, among other obvious flaws, but no one thought they were fatal flaws. Two contractors who are recently in the building said the issues can be resolved without enormous expense. One estimated that basic repairs to keep the building from further deterioration would be $10,000 to $15,000. Another estimated that the cost to make the building usable could be as little as $150,000. Of course, the eventual use would determine the cost. Both the Ormond Beach Arts District and Historical Society support preserving the building. It could add a new architectural style to the city's collection of notable buildings. If this building is not preserved part of our cultural history, cultural history will be gone forever. Please pause the plan to demolish it. It would be a win-win for all. Thank you.
Terry Mercer, followed by Bill Denny.
Hi, I'm Terry Mercer. I live at 31 Dix Avenue. And I do not want the building torn down, nor do I want a temporary shell parking lot on our waterfront. I have to question why. Why tear down a historical building for a temporary shell parking lot only to then tear out the shell parking lot in a year or so for another building? If we truly need more parking on the north side of Granada, wouldn't that put us right back to where we started? The property right now has 24 usable parking spaces. Why are they not being used? I walk past this church all the time, and I don't remember ever seeing anyone use that parking lot. If we demolish the church for parking, all we gain is 32 more parking spaces, but we lose a historical building. A piece of our history is gone forever. Instead of demolishing a historical building for 32 spaces, why don't we pause and try to figure out parking for the entire city? We have well over 500 parking spaces when you start looking at all the options. And yes, there are plenty of empty spaces. Some on the north side, some on the south side. If you do park on the south side, we have two signal intersections with pedestrian crosswalks, one by Beach Street and the other at Ridgewood, with another pedestrian crosswalk in between them. All of them are close to public parking and only a few minutes to walk to the core restaurant area. We also have a walkway under the bridge that could be used. Paint murals on the support columns, as they did in New Smyrna, and you have an art walk. We could ask the restaurants if we really need parking to have their employees park on the south side, which has the more parking, and that would free up customers to park on the north side. More information on where to park, either by social media, outreach to hotels, or more signs, and I'm talking about small ones with just a P for parking and an arrow. Remember, in the future, we will have more merchants on the south side. So to look at our entire downtown parking makes sense. Please pause the demolition. Look at all of our parking. Make available for the public to use the 24 spaces next to the church. Let's see how much it's actually used before we pave over Ormond. A pause will also allow others time to explore options for how best to use the building. By keeping the church, we are keeping the charm of our downtown, which we all love, and will be saving a piece of history for future generations to enjoy and not just read about it on a plaque. Remember, if we don't start saving these newer, older buildings now, they will never be old. A city needs its older buildings to maintain its sense of permanency and its heritage. Thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate for you all listening to us tonight. Thank you.
Bill Denny, followed by Lee Dunkel.
I'm Bill Denny, from 1027 North Halifax, from Common Ground. First, I want to thank the commissioners and the mayor for taking time to listen to the concerns of the citizens of Ormond Beach. As everybody is aware, the COVID emergency did not allow this type of forum to address the desires of the citizens concerning Union Church. The citizens have requested a sufficient delay to reassess the city options for the church property. What we would like to address during the delay are these. First, we think it is critical to have several public forums to engage the citizens of Ormond Beach and have them express their viewpoints and capture innovative ideas where the Union Church could be repurposed, though it would enhance the downtown district, bring in revenue to the city, or improve tourism. Next, we think it is critical to conduct an independent assessment of the condition of the church building and the current cost estimate to renovate the Union Church. We have heard from an independent contractor and private citizens who have recently seen the inside of the church and have a totally different opinion of the condition of the church versus the city's assessment. Plus, because of the historical nature of the church, we can explore availability of grants, echo, and stimulus funding to lessen the financial impact. A key component in the decision process is to obtain up-to-date cost estimates of a new building and how does this compare to renovating the church. We recognize that there is a concern about the availability of parking. We definitely think that this delay could be used to accomplish a comprehensive review of the parking requirement, the availability of current parking, and the various options to increase parking. The basic principle of Common Ground, which Linda Williams and I have championed, is to bring together all sides of an issue for open dialogue. We feel this delay will allow just that discussion. As always, Common Ground strives through open dialogue to achieve a win-win solution for all. And I truly believe if everybody comes together with a common goal to determine what is the best use of this property for a majority of Ormond Beach citizens, Ormond can achieve a win-win solution. At this time, I would like to ask for a show of hands from those here, the citizens, who would support the delay in demolishing the church. Thank you. And also, I have some 220 signatures and a petition requesting nothing.
Thank you, Bill. Lee Dunkel, followed by Susie Williams.
Basically, everybody has said exactly what I would say, and they've said it very eloquently. So I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I want you to know that I'm for saving the church. I'm for no on the parking lot. And thank you for hosting this tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susie Williams. I was born at Halifax in 1953. I went to the Union Church when it was there. Now it's Riverside. My grandmother was the nursery caretaker. And I went to the summer programs for young kids. I think that we can do both of these things, get a parking lot and save the church. By tearing down the concrete part, rebuilding the church, have concerts, plays, weddings. If Salty Church wants to have church services there, I think it can be done in both directions. And you'll get more parking spaces in the back by tearing down the concrete. But I would be very sad if that church went away. Thank you.
Bondi Powell, followed by Winston Churchill.
How you doing? My name is Bondi Powell. I live at 21 Lincoln Avenue, right across from the church. So from a physical standpoint, I'm probably one of the most affected residents as far as what goes on at the church and some of my neighbors as well. But we've got small children that live beside me. We put up with a lot there by the church. The people that come downtown are usually pretty good. I mean, I would hate to see a parking lot installed there, especially a gravel parking lot. We do get some winds in that area. And the little parking lot by the river, we do suffer a little bit with sand and such there. We have overnight people that bring campers in and basically camp across the street overnight, sometimes for a week. So we get everything associated with parking lots and living next to a parking lot. I like the lady's last comment. I think the concrete part of the church is in very poor condition. I don't think it has much history to it. I don't think it could be reused personally. The A-frame structure, until this meeting, and I have not been in that church, and I don't know what it looks like inside. My first thought was, you know, let's, you know, I was all for taking it down, to be honest with you. Then I heard a gravel parking lot. I was like, well, I would rather have the church there than a gravel parking lot. And then when they fenced it in, I was pleased with that. You know, we get homeless people that come and stay by the church. You know, with the fencing, that's pretty well solved that problem. That road, Lincoln Avenue, even though it's a historical district, it is a cut-through. And so, we have a lot of traffic in the evening, people going home. That's not a big deal. I just wish they would slow down a little bit, you know, with the kids there. But, you know, it's an economical decision, you know, whether that church, the A-frame part, you know, could be saved. I mean, it's not a bad-looking structure, you know. I see some of the people's points here with it. But, you know, it's a large A-frame structure. I don't know if the interior would be cheap to operate, cheaply cool. It's a lot of, it'll be a lot of empty space, but I think it should be studied further. And so, I would be in favor personally of delaying... And so I would be in favor personally of delaying the demolition, you know, until some further discussions and studies are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Bondi. Winston Churchill, followed by Mary Churchill.
Good evening, council. I'm Winston Churchill, retired Coast Guard officer and resident of Orman Beach these past 25 years. I rise this evening to call attention to one potential worthy use for this building, should it be preserved. Many here will know of the most excellent and impressive Veterans Museum, which has operated on Beach Street in the older part of Daytona Beach for a number of years. Well, early last year, they lost their lease, had to move out. Their impressive, extensive collection of historical artifacts is now in the VFW Hall on Sixth Avenue, a leafy residential area quite inappropriate for attracting people to come and learn of history and see what veterans have done in the past. But I think the building in question tonight, with its large open room, would be a superb place for the Veterans Museum to reestablish itself and would provide another gem, a different kind of gem, to our downtown neighborhood. I urge the council first defer destruction of this building, and then further that city officials reach out to the Veterans Museum organization and discuss possibilities. Thank you very much.
Mary Churchill, followed by, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Ed McGraw, thank you. Be followed by Mark Rubin.
Gets heavy up there, don't it, folks? Lot of weight can be put on your shoulders. You're there because of the people. You are of the people. You are by the people. But most importantly, you are for the people. That is your job. That's what you decided to do, and we appreciate it. I've been in construction since 1975. I don't throw good stuff away. That building is beautiful. My wife married me there. Don't go throwing architecture like that away. We can rebuild it. I've done 1929 buildings and made them back to new again. Beautiful. So keep our history. Appreciate it.
Mark Rubin, followed by Kathy Wharton.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. We're all here asking for at least a six-month period to study the issues that are at hand. Wow, there's not much I can say that hasn't already been said. Everybody's pretty much in agreement that we need to take more time and study and see how we can save it. I will say that I've had the privilege of living in Europe for approximately, well, several years, almost eight or 10 years, in both Italy, Germany, and in Italy and Great Britain as well. And I can say one thing that I really learned is if we don't learn from history, we can't learn anything at all. If we start demolishing old buildings, there would be no Europe. And Notre Dame, which was severely damaged with a fire, would have been torn down, and the Vatican wouldn't exist. History is very important. I think we need to preserve it. Whether it's used as a church or some other use is not important, but we need to preserve what we have, because if we don't, we won't have nothing at all. Thank you.
Kathy Wharton, followed by Lynda Williams.
Hello, my name is Kathy Wharton. I am a resident of Orman Beach, and I'm a native of Daytona Beach. Over the years, I've seen a lot of changes to this area, including the destruction of many of our local landmarks, some of them historic and worthy of saving. Probably the best example of a new miss is the Casements, John D. Rockefeller's summer home. Had it not been for a dedicated group of local citizens who had a vision and fought to save that historic house, the city would have allowed destruction of one of the most important landmarks in the county, indeed in the state of Florida. Look at it now, the Casements. Look at all the good it has provided to this community and to visitors from around the country. Look at the revenue to the city that has been generated. The same can be achieved by preserving the Union Church property. What is the best usage for the church property? One of the best ideas is a community center, something with broad appeal, a versatile center of interest close to downtown, something that would allow a variety of uses. The scope of the center is, of course, open to imagination, but for starters, it could provide ample space for classes, lectures, or presentations. It could be a gathering place for clubs, groups, and organizations, including local artists, photographers, writers, and musicians, plus any number of cultural events conducive to our area. It could also serve as a new home for the farmer's market, which is currently held at the City Hall Plaza. Moving its location to a new and revitalized community center and holding the farmer's market on Saturdays instead of Thursdays would attract a lot more people, some of whom find weekends more convenient for shopping and/or browsing. In addition, there could be an indoor-outdoor flea market. I mean, we'll have to brainstorm here. Replete with a small concession stand for vendors and shoppers. This, too, would be a great boon to locals and visitors looking for bargains or selling their wares. Imagine this kind of wholesome activity taking place weekly on the grounds of the old Union Church, which, by the way, dates back to 1883. This would certainly add to the acclaim that this once proud church deserves. It would also provide revenue to the city in terms of vendor fees, club fees, concession fees, concession stand fees, et cetera. But the church property can provide a lot more than dollars for the city. It can provide unity, camaraderie, and like-minded events that no restaurant or sports bar, however glitzy or laid-back, can ever offer the citizens. There's more.
Thank you, Kathy. Lynda Williams.
Lynda Williams, 131 Bozardi Drive, moderator for Common Ground, Civil Discourse, Common Ground. It's always scary talking to you guys, like I'm talking to my mom and dad. But anyway, I appreciate very much you letting us do this tonight, and it just, it really warms my heart that you were willing to do this. We appreciate it so much. And I'm really here, everybody's said everything they can about this, but I'm here to promote this process of finding common ground. Orman Beach can be a leader in that, in bringing people together. And the reason I like that is that more creative ideas keep coming as we talk about it. And who knows, maybe in the end, we'd say, oh, well, let's tear it down and build a green building. Everybody might like that. Haven't heard from any environmentalists. So there's still more ideas that can come. And this is sort of, this meeting is sort of like how we do Common Ground. We have input, the first part of the meeting, and this is the input part. We've heard what you all think at different times, but we'd like more input from you and from our city employees about this. But tonight, we're having input from citizens. So this is the first part of finding common ground. The middle part is the part that's the most fun, where we get creative and we just talk about, throw things out, and then something emerges that nobody has even thought of yet because of what I call synergy. So the synergy part comes next, if there is an opportunity to do that, if you all will give the citizens and other folks the opportunity to bring together the synergy. I thought about, since I know somebody that does a history of rock and roll, an old building with a history of rock and roll in it, and my son's a musician, bringing the young people into play with a music venue where they can play their music, have bands, that kind of thing. Let me see, some other things that came up, steel structure. It's still a great steel structure, even if we don't make it look like it used to. And we know that some of the old materials are even better. Good bones, study of need, get creative about parking. I think that merchants would love that, if we had a little trolley or something, or we could even give somebody a business of taking people across Granada, parking all over and taking people across Granada. Slow down traffic on Granada, parking on each side, a little trolley. Don't know, don't throw away the architecture. So those are just ideas that are flowing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this point, we've heard from all the speakers. This is now the time for the commission to have a discussion on the items that are before it. There will be no votes, no motions or no votes this evening. I know that may be a surprise or disappointing to some of you, but depending on the discussion, if there's consensus to do something, staff will work on that and then bring it back to us, is my understanding. Joyce or Randy, if you want to clarify that process at all, please let me know, or if that's good. Okay, good deal. Well, we'll just go down the line and start with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you all for coming out this evening and sharing your thoughts and your feelings and your ideas. Many of you have been doing that in writing, via emails, and through phone calls and texts also, and thank you for that, too. This is what I call, this is what makes Orman Beach great. This is the fabric of Orman Beach because people care about our city. There's a whole lot of other cities, not just in Florida, but all over the country, where there wouldn't be, I don't know, there must be close to 100 people here, about a topic like this. It would just, it would just happen, and it would be over, and, you know, some people, a lot of people probably wouldn't even notice. But here in Orman Beach, people do care, and thank you all for caring and for sharing your views. Everybody in this room probably knows that I did not vote for the demolition of the building. I voted, I wanted, or I hoped that we would enact a six-month pause, but that's not what we did. One of the things that, I had been telling folks that we needed a motion to reconsider. I had a lengthy discussion with the city attorney yesterday, I think it was, it might have been today, but it seems like it was yesterday, about the process. And it's actually not a motion to reconsider. We can't reconsider a contract to, a contract with a construction firm. I guess we can't reconsider a contract, period. Once we issue a contract, we don't have the right to cancel the contract, because contract is mutual. So, but what we can do is we can talk to the contractor and say, would you consider modifying your contract? Okay? Would you consider making a change to your contract? Because the contract that's currently with Weigel Construction has a completion date in it. It says you need to complete this, or you need to do certain steps, and then complete the demolition of the building by a certain date. It's my understanding, from an email I received earlier today from the city manager, that staff has had that discussion with Weigel Construction, and they indeed have agreed that they would be receptive to modifying their contract. Okay? They've obviously incurred some costs, and, you know, obviously, they should be made whole for whatever costs they've incurred. That would only be fair. But when I say modifying their contract, it could just be as simple as, don't demolish the building, you know, for X amount of time. In other words, you can stay set up the way you are, but don't actually do what we hired you to do, that part of it. So the other comment I wanted, so the first step, if you will, in this process, as I see it, is we have a willing contractor, we have a contract with a willing contractor to allow modification of his contract, and that is critical. The next step is, we would have to, and the mayor's already said it, we would, we can't take any formal action tonight, and the reason for that is, it wasn't advertised. We didn't, we didn't, the agenda just said it would be, we would be here tonight to get input from the community. Okay? So that's really all we can do tonight. But what we can do is we can share our opinions, each of us will share our opinions on where we stand on this project. And then through that, a consensus will be formed, one way or the other. Either we proceed on the path that we're on right now, or we move to a different path, okay, that the majority of you asked, that they asked for, vast majority of you asked for, which is a delay. So, and that will be, will determine that after the, well, after, I don't know, after, could take three, could take four, five, could take all five, who knows? We will determine that after everybody speaks, whether or not we have three who want to keep doing what we, what we've already decided to do, or at least three who would want to make a change. The one thing I wanted to say to my, to my fellow commissioners is that I have been pretty boisterous, and I've been pretty emotionally, emotionally charged. Yeah, some have said, not all, but I've been, I'm emotional about this, not so much because I want to save the building, honestly. I'm not really there. I don't know. I believe in restoring old buildings. I've done a fair amount of that in my lifetime, and I know how expensive it is to build new. I've been inside the building. I have quite a bit of experience in renovation, new construction, and so forth, and I believe that fixing the building is not anywhere near as expensive as some have alleged. But the thing I wanted to say to my fellow commissioners here is that I don't want anything that I say to imply guilt or fear. In other words, whenever somebody tries to motivate me with guilt or fear, I immediately push back. I immediately stop them, because this is not a, I don't, I, for me, I don't make emotion, I try not to make emotional decisions, I'm sure I do, but this is a rational decision. And what I see us doing tonight is really just fulfilling, if it's the, if it's the pleasure of a majority of my fellow commission members, giving the community opportunity to come up with a plan. And I said this at our last city commission meeting, that that plan needs to be really, really good, you know? Because they've already, there's a majority of them that want to, that already wanted to bulldoze the building, okay? So the bar has been set very high, and I, and that's abundantly clear, okay, to, you know, this commission. So I would just say that, I mean, I think that's really all I have to say, is that the process has started, and now we get to hear from the other four members of our commission. And thank you all very much for listening. Oh, I also want to thank you for one other thing. Thank you for being amazingly civil and talking, talking about the issues and sharing how you feel or think about the topic. We live in a world now where civility is frequently not a part of public discussion, and where public servants, you know, like us, elected officials, are frequently challenged and criticized personally for, you know, just doing our job. So thank you all very much, everybody who spoke, for being civil, because we can, we can disagree agreeably, and it's so great to see that happen in these chambers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby, Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, thank you very much, and it's great to see so many people here this evening. I see some neighbors, I see some friends, I see some old classmates from elementary, junior high and high school. So thanks for coming out tonight. I, I've, I've been in that building, I say building now, the church, several times. I read proclamations in there, I've been to a couple services there, been to a funeral, funeral service there, and I was there recently touring the facility with my own eyes because... funeral service there, and I was there recently touring the facility with my own eyes because, you know, you heard a speaker say it, they were referring to me, I believe, because like, I constantly say, you are our bosses, and, you know, you elect us to make decisions for the entire city. Sometimes we're going to agree, sometimes we're going to disagree. Quite frankly, I think that's healthy. I don't want everybody agreeing with everybody all of the time, and we just came from a workshop, and I had a resident tell me, I loved your workshop because you all were not on the same page with everything, and that's how government should work, in their opinion. But recently, when I toured that building that was a church, it was not in good shape. It doesn't seem to me like it's a healthy building that anybody should spend any amount of time in. I'll tell you, my vote to purchase the property, and it was Commissioner Selby, I believe, that brought it to our attention, and I jumped on it out of the gate, and one of my comments was, they're not making any more waterfront property, with the mindset of, we would use it for a civic center or a community center. Okay? If that's not going to happen, I heard someone mention tonight about, you know, sell the property. I've said it publicly, I think the paper quoted me with it, I would be more than happy to be one of five votes to sell that property. You heard Mr. Cafferty say today, he was talking about prices of real estate, it's his business, it's what he does, but we've all seen the real estate boom, the city's owned it for three years. I think you, the residents of Ormond Beach, why shouldn't you make more money and put it in your city coffers and sell that property to somebody that wants to do something that they're allowed to do within code on that property? That's fine. Someone comes before us, you know, and says, I want to buy it, and it's going to be at for profit for the city, I'm, I'm all for that. I'm okay with that. But after seeing what the consultants shared with us, and listening to my fellow commission members, I don't believe that that property is going to work for a community center or a civic center. I don't believe there's, if you put a building there, you're going to have enough parking to get people there. Interesting, I saw a report where I believe Ormond Main Street, one of their goals was to get more parking for the downtown. When I hear the word partnership, and I'll just tell you all, because there's a lot of you here about this right now, but a month ago or so, we had, we had some, some different community groups come up, and they were using the word partnership, and maybe it wasn't used because of what I said at the end of that meeting, but that always, that always pushes me back. That concerns me a little bit, because what I, when I hear, when I hear partnership is, whatever group wants to use it, whatever organization wants to use it, they want to use it, but on your, on your dime. They want you, the residents, to pay, which we already have, we paid for the, for the building and the land. And if my recollection is correct, and I think it is, but the appraisal came back that with the building or without the building, it was basically worth the same, same amount of money. Do I want a parking lot there long-term? I might surprise some of you right now with my answer, but no, I don't. But I heard something tonight about a veterans museum, but I'm telling you right now, I, I wouldn't want anybody to keep that building the way it is and put anything in it unless you said, you know, hey, we're purchasing it, and we're going to deal with all the liability, and we've got the deep pockets to get the asbestos out, and there was a rodent problem there, and there's mold and mildew and all kinds of issues with the building. Because like I said, I toured it, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to come up here and be green on the issue. I wanted, I wanted to have some background on it. So I don't want a long-term parking lot. I would be fine for selling it for a profit. There's an idea of possibly, you know, a veteran museum, which, you know, the way the building is laid out right now, you know, I heard people say, well, you know, you know, I mean, there's as many things you could do in it, and our consultants, one of the designs they gave us for a community center was keeping the A-frame building the way it was. It's just my opinion, but it was ridiculous looking. It didn't look right. It just didn't fit for a community center in Ormond Beach, the way they had it. So I, I am still for demolishing the building, and there can be a short-term parking lot there, but then we can, we can go from there. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Persis.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank all of you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and feelings and opinions with us. I am a, was born in Halifax Hospital, and I'm a longtime resident of this, of this county and this city, and I too have attended weddings, funerals, celebrations on, at 56 North Beach Street. As a principal, I gave out lots of awards to lots of kids that were there, and we had lots of programs, and it was, and even at those times, the church was starting to deterior, deteriorate over the years that I had been there. I, this is, this is really, you know, something that's near and dear to my heart, because I believe that when the city bought the church, it was to make a profit for our citizens so that we could, you know, do something good for you, maybe sell it at a profit, build a community center, something that, for something that everybody could use, young or old, do something, have something spectacular and vibrant and beautiful on that lot. So I too, I too, like all, I think all of the commissioners and everyone, we have, I had a tour of the church, and I wanted to do my due diligence. And here's what, here's what I saw, and then I, recently, as of today, I've talked to three different builders, people that refurbished buildings, and I've, and that have been in that church. And so this is what they saw and what I saw, and I just want to share that with you. First of all, it was said by all of them that there would be a total remodel needed, at significant repair and cost. There's termite infestation in the wood and the ceilings, you know, the high beams, there's termites in there, there's little droppings on the floor, you can see that termites have been there. The whole AC needs to be replaced. There's asbestos in the floors that hasn't even been treated yet. I thought it had been treated a couple of weeks ago, but we're still waiting to get that treated. So there is a lot of asbestos in there. The building is now going through rodent abatement, they're still catching rodents right now as we speak. They, the, the building needs all new windows and doors. They're old, if it was going to be used or repurposed, you need windows and new windows and doors. The building would need to be hurricane resistant with all the storms that we're having. And these builders seem to think that this, this building was built kind of at a cheaper cost, because none of the materials in there are high, high-end materials. The glass is not stained glass, it's just painted like colored glass, it's not worth saving. So I, seeing that, I feel like it's my responsibility to not, I don't want anybody in there because I don't feel the building safe. I think it's a sick building. I think it needs, I think it needs to be torn down, and I think something needs to go there, once it's torn down, that we can all use and enjoy, and I don't think it's that building. Do I want a parking lot there? I really don't want a parking lot there. Maybe temporary, I'm for just leaving it just totally vacant. I really don't want to spend any more money on that, because I just, like someone said tonight, you're just going to have to tear that up. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not totally in favor of that for any long period of time. But I have heard from many residents that aren't here tonight, and they called me just to let me know, we would love to see a community center there, we would love to see a beautiful, vibrant, gorgeous building on our, on Beach Street, on Riverfront, because it is such a gorgeous lot. And if not, I think we should sell it and make money, because I do think we would make some money on it. So I, I just, I, I'm just, would tell everyone, I will not be changing my vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank everyone for being so polite, sitting behind a computer and writing an email, and yet coming up here to speak is two totally different things, and I do appreciate everyone's input. I was looking for a justification to change my vote and to reconsider the contract. That justification would have been a plan with money attached in some way, and I didn't hear it tonight. So I'll make it short and sweet, I will not be reconsidering the contract.
All right. Well, the, we're not really here to reconsider the contract per se. The question, I guess, on the table was if you were for or against a six-month delay to explore other options. I think if people were given that time, they could come forward with dollars attached to the proposal. But Randy, maybe you can explain a little more on the RFP process and what's required under the CRA statute for a property that sits in our downtown area.
Sure. Just to kind of recap very quickly, some of the highlights, you've got, you're under contract, obviously. So really, if there is a desire by the commission for change in direction from the contract, terms of the contract, it would require us to bring back an amendment to the contract with the consent of the contractor, either a one or two-step process, initially hitting the pause button for some length of time. I've heard six months, I've heard sufficient time, but for some definitive time. That, the purpose of that, as I understand it, would be to allow any interested party to bring a proposal to the city. If that's where the city commission desires to go with it, there's a process for that. The property is in the Community Redevelopment Area District, and there's a statute that governs how property must be disposed, whether under by lease or by, by sale, including the redevelopment of the property. And so we would need to comply with the statute, and we would have to issue an RFP, which means that the staff would have to develop a scope for the proposal. We would need some sufficient details, we would need to bring that back to the commission for the commission to look at it and let us know whether you wanted to make some additional changes, and then we would publish that, and it has to be published for a minimum of 30 days. And then the purpose of that is to give any interested party, any developer, an opportunity to present a proposal under the terms of the scope of the, of that proposal. And it could be for the sale of the property, it could be for the lease of the property and redevelopment of the property. And then there's a process by which, there's a time period by which those interested parties would have to develop a proposal, submit it to the city, and then there's another period of time by which we would have to evaluate those proposals and then bring it back to the commission for final decision. So that's kind of the process that you would get, get involved in if you, if there was a desire to kind of hit the pause button. And depending on the outcome of that process, if the commission decided that it did indeed want to accept one of the proposals, and I won't get into the criteria for evaluating those proposals, then the next step would be, you would have to terminate the contract with the consent of the contractor, because you're still technically under the contract, even if you hit the pause button. So that's the process. It's, it's doable, you know, we can navigate through those issues, you know, depending on what you would like to do. But that's, but that's the process. I think that answers the question.
Thank you, Randy. And I, you know, just for the record, I support a six-month delay to allow that process to go forward so that we can, we can hear proposals. I think the question is, I heard Commissioner Kent and Commissioner Persis say they would be willing to vote to sell it for a profit, but we don't know if it's, if that's a possibility without having the RFP out there. So would you also support a six-month delay to investigate that?
I, I personally would not, because I remember the report stating that the property was worth the same amount with or without the building on it. In fact, it might have been even worth more money without the building on it. I don't know, Joyce, if someone from staff has that recollection about what that was, but I believe that the property was actually worth more without the building on it. So I, I wouldn't, no.
And Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, for the same reason Commissioner Kent stated, that's why I would not either.
Okay. And so I supported the six-month delay. I think it is an amazing asset, and I thank Commissioner Selby for bringing it to us as a strategic purchase, that Riverfront property. I agree, I got over 100 emails of people wanting to have a delay to allow further discussions. I had two or three that said, tear it down, and you can do a public records request and verify that if you'd like. You can ask for all our emails, everything on the church property, and then, you know, do your own tally if you want to do that. But overwhelmingly, our residents wanted to do something that saves that property as a public use in some form or fashion, and so knowing that it's dangerous not to listen to your residents, and that there were a lot of people that wanted to be heard on this issue, I called the special meeting, because I thought it was important. And one of the things that helped me realize that was a few months ago, we had an issue trying to keep a school in our community, and the government agency that we went to asking them just to be heard, just to listen to what we have to say, there was only one council person, and that was School Board Member Persis, who was willing to let us give our presentation. The rest of them didn't want to hear it. No, thank you, we've made up our minds during a global pandemic, mind you, and we slipped this through, we made our decision, and that's the end of it. And I said, no, I am not happy that they treated our residents that way, me that way, and I'm not going to have this commission treat our residents that way. So at a minimum, we could at least listen to what you have to say, and I would have hoped somebody, somebody would change their mind, been a hero for the people, to at least allow a further process, potentially save the building. Maybe not, it could still come down after that, that process, but it at least would have been that opportunity, so. Yes, sir, Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a question for Randy, for the city attorney. Randy, I got your email earlier today, and your summary of it was, was very helpful. I have a question, though, specifically about that, the statute that controls disposition. Is demolition of a building included in that statute? Does that fall under those same time requirements?
It, it would, yes. I mean, you have some discretion within the statute to define the purpose and the scope of what you want to do and a timeline by which you, you want to do it. So we're not there now, because the exercise of the current action is, is based on a legislative decision by the city commission, if you, if you, if you will. So you've already determined a purpose for the use of the property, which is to demolish the structure and to convert it at least temporarily into a parking area. Once you get into the mode of, you may want to sell it, you may want to lease it, you may want to have a private interest come in and redevelopment, then that will trigger the requirements of the CRA statute. And there's a, there is a provision in there that, that determines how you can dispose of that property. Now, you do have some discretion within the parameters of the statute. You know, it, it could include demolition as, as well. I mean, you have the discretion to kind of shape the scope as you would deem appropriate, as long as there was a, a public purpose and a finding for, for that purpose.
So, so the statute is triggered if the real estate leaves public hands? Either it's sold or leased to somebody other than the city?
Yes, there's a, there's a provision in the statute, it's section 163.380, that pertains exclusively to how you dispose of real property in a community redevelopment district area. So that's, that's what we would fall under.
All right. And then, Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd just like to make a, have a question for Commissioner Littleton.
Sure.
Commissioner Littleton, I have great respect for you, I really do. And I, you know, I appreciate your brevity, something I rarely engage in. The, however, can I, I'll just ask you a question. I mean, really, I don't think anybody who spoke today-
I mean, really, I don't think anybody who spoke tonight really has anywhere near enough information to come forward with a proposal, you know, and finances, you know? And also, an awful lot of people that have reached out to me, I would say the vast majority of the people, and most of the people who spoke tonight, are probably not ultimately the tenants, if you will. They're just concerned citizens who want to have an opportunity to explore all possible uses. So I guess what I want to ask you is, I mean, are you not interested in giving them the opportunity to at least do that? You know, I mean, in other words, like, what they need is, they need time in order to come back with a plan that you then can, you know, decide whether or not it's good enough, you know? I mean, that's really what we're talking about. And so is that something that you can, I mean, I respect your position, but is that something that you could consider?
Ultimately, we purchased the property going on three years ago, and it hasn't been used by the taxpayers of the city going on that time. So I'm ready to move forward with making the property useful for our citizens. No one in the three years has come to me with anything even close to a plan for the property. That's what I've been looking for, and if they had, I'd be open to reconsidering. But right now, I see it almost as fool's errand to keep this out of the hands of the citizens and useful property.
Mayor, if I may. So the way I perceive it, you obviously have a different perception, we all have different perceptions. The way I perceive it is, tonight, this meeting right now, is the first opportunity that these people have even had to begin to tell us how it's going to be. I think we owe it to them. I think we owe it to them to give them that time to come up with a plan and to see whether or not it's good enough. And furthermore, you know, and again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, my comments included, I'm not trying to guilt anybody, I respect your decisions, I respect every one of you. Because it's not easy to get here, you know, to get up on this dais, we all know that. And it's a lot of work. I don't know, if anybody wonders about whether or not it's a lot of work, trust me, it's a lot of work, especially to be responsive, especially to address concerns and inquiries. But, you know, I think we, the other question I have is, what's the rush? The fact that the fact that we've owned this for three years, and, you know, there were things going on. I mean, there was a, we hired a consultant, and they came back with a report, and most of us said, you know, we weren't very pleased with the report, it didn't really hit the mark. Then COVID hit, and, you know, we got an 18-month delay. There were some private conversations going on between some people in the community and staff. So things were happening. I personally spoke with the people from the veterans museum, that was one of the potential, you know, one of the potential users. So I guess that's my other big question is, what's the rush? What harm would six more months do? What would change?
And I'll just throw out, I mean, as far as the dollars attached, I've heard dollar amounts that groups are willing to put forward, but they don't know the rules of the, they don't know the rules of the game. They don't know how the RFP is going to read. I've heard as much as a half million dollars from groups that have had good success with historic buildings. But until they make, they get what the RFP is going to say and are able to respond to it, they can't publicly commit those kind of dollars. So they need that additional time. So that's pretty much where we're at. I mean, these folks are here, our residents are here, looking for someone who can be a hero. Commissioner Selby and I's position hasn't really changed, so the vote really lies with one of the other three, and I respect your positions too, each of you. But I also know there are potential dire circumstances when you don't listen to the will of the people. And at least allow, after a global pandemic, a decent process on a public piece of property to determine the future use. And so, you know, ignoring the voice of the people, not listening to your residents, is a very dangerous, dangerous thing to do. And so this is an opportunity to be a hero or not, but we're looking for basically one person to change the direction. Anybody willing to do that? I think that's going to be it then. We have no further business before the commission tonight, and thank you all for coming out. And at this time, we are adjourned.